We come tonight in a day of Thanksgiving that we have yet another day to live. We pray tonight, Lord, that you would grant us wisdom, discernment, and understanding as we seek to look after the interests of our citizens and our community. We thank you for elected leaders that we can come and bring our concerns and desires to. We ask, Lord, again, for the wisdom and discernment that all of us need to contribute to the betterment of our community, that we continue to make this a great place to live, to raise a family, and to belong to. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Ask you to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five is a public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Seeing none, I will close the public forum and move on to the acceptance of the agenda. I don't see any new information here, any additional agenda ideas?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion by Chris, second by Sherri, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, I believe we have a request for a street closure. Is that person here? It's up to you then.
That's me, Your Honor. Every year, because of the street closures for National Night Out, instead of having individual neighborhoods come in, we usually take care of that through the police department. This year, we have two neighborhoods that have requested street closures for National Night Out, August 1st, Tuesday, August 1st. One of them is, where's the addition? Green Valley, 8, 9, and 10. They've requested South One Wood Drive and South Putter Drive, the same place that they had it. It's around the pool area, same as they've had in previous years. The other one is Green Valley 5 and 6, South Fairway Circle and South Lakeside Drive, again, around their pool, same place they've had it in the past.
Questions?
Just...
Sherri?
Yeah, I kinda have a question.
Sure.
Question, comment, actually. On the street closures, if you're at the very end of a cul-de-sac and you just talk to all the neighbors and everybody know what's going on, do you really have to worry about going to the police department and requesting a closure?
Technically, legally, probably they're gonna be standing in the street and not wanting traffic, but probably not.
Okay.
It's in the back of a cul-de-sac.
Right. I mean, you know, and it's kinda like you've got it cleared with everybody that they're good and they're probably participating.
Right. No one's complained, or no one complains about it. It shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, 'cause otherwise, I mean, I'm not sure. It's kinda still being worked out in my neighborhood, but I don't know if they maybe wouldn't have enough time to get a street closure request in. So, you're saying that it can be handled straight through the...
They still would get the time at the next, the next council meeting would be the last one they could get it, but...
Okay.
I'm familiar with where you're talking about, and I don't think that, it wasn't an issue last year, and I don't think they got a street closure last...
I don't think they did either, so, okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd ask a question based on what Caroline just said. Is there an actual ordinance that is forcing a community to ask for a street to be closed?
Yes, it's a public street.
So I guess they do need to, if it's an ordinance...
Technically, that's what she said.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just answer any questions.
Is your motion to approve this request?
I'd make that motion as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Sherri, second by Caroline, to approve the National Night Out street closures as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Give me a second, Mayor. Can I add to that? Just while we're on that topic, National Night Out is Tuesday, August 1st this year, from 6:00 to 8:30. We have 12 neighborhoods that are signed up this year, the most we've ever had. A number of them in Green Valley, Tuscany, Crescent Lakes. I know I'm gonna be missing some, Cornerstone. This is a number of neighborhoods, and we're gonna do something a little different this year. It's virtually impossible for us to get all the judges to all the neighborhoods during their parties to do it justice. So this year, we're gonna have a photo competition by the neighborhoods where each neighborhood that participates will submit a photo that we will display and allow the community to vote on who the top block party was this year.
Nice.
Cool.
Just wanted to pass that on.
And those will be on the website?
They will be on our Facebook page, where people will be allowed to go on and vote for top neighborhoods.
Your officers will be moseying around at these throughout the hearing?
We will have, as in years past, although because we're up to 12 neighborhoods, we're gonna be dividing our troops, like both of our canines will be going to different parties. We'll have our McGruff and our Reddy Fox mascots going, and we'll have, the liaison officers to those neighborhoods will be at the locations, plus a number of bike officers and what have you, be going to all of them.
Nice.
You just gave me another question. I've been receiving the emails, but I haven't done anything special to sign up our neighborhood. Are we just assumed that we're one of the neighborhoods that...
I think Officer Sned, or Sergeant Snedeker is your liaison, and I believe you're on the, they're on the list.
Okay.
So someone, someone's been communicating with our officers.
Okay.
I have a question. What was the date on that again?
August 1st. It's always the first Tuesday of the August. This happens to be August 1st.
All right. We'll move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. It's items eight, 1 through eight, 11.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Troy, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, 2018 budget hearing publication.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, we've talked about the budget the last couple of meetings, and I just thought I would kinda give a quick review of our CAFR and then just give some summarized budget data, and then asking for the council's approval to publish the budget with no mill increase. Just starting, our new revenues, and I say potential because we actually have to collect, collect them to get them, but this is what the budget is currently showing, is we'll have an increase of $51,000 in motor vehicle taxes, new property tax without a mill increase is $308,000, so we have a total of $359,000, what I would say coming straight from taxes into the budget. Majority of, over half of that is on, is growth. I would say the COLA goes towards a good portion of that also, or the cost of living increase, and then a little bit comes off of valuations. We'll go to the next slide. I always, I've been putting this slide the last couple of years, just to look at what our asset and liabilities look like. What's important in this number is while cash is important, and everybody likes to have a lot of cash, if your assets are not strong, that means you have a bunch of liabilities sitting out there that really aren't shown on your books. Our assets to liabilities is about three to one, just short of three to one. You can see that we've stayed pretty steady in the last year, but this is, our assets are a combination, of course, our streets, our buildings, all of our land, and of course the cash we have on hand. So that number's been pretty, been positive. We're in a net position of $93 million, which is slightly higher than our net position last year. So, that's a good trend, looking at the last five years, and part of that's from the great amount of roadwork we do with the sales tax, but also some of the buildings we've built and the investments we've made that have just been short-term borrowing instead of long-term borrowing. We'll go to the next slide. Every year, I like to give a look at our general fund balances and some of our other budget balances, but we have about a 37%, 38% carryover at the end of the year. I think GFOA and most municipal financial experts say 25% is pretty strong on that, so we continue to be slightly above that. I think we shoot for 25%, but certainly for the last four or five years, we've been well within that range and stay right at the 35% to 40% level. So let's go on to the Employee Benefits Fund. This fund is slightly below 30%. Again, this is essentially pays for our health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, and a few other benefits that employees get, so it's not quite as critical that we keep, you know, 25% in there, although we have it. And that's another property tax fund, probably the second, the second biggest levy overall in our budgeted funds. Then we can go on to the Bond and Interest Fund. This fund has remained strong for a couple of reasons. Donna and Jenny do a great job of keeping track of our special assessments and doing draws on those who don't pay. So, we never run a very large delinquency on special assessments because we have collateral and letters of credit behind all of those who borrow from us, and, you know, their letters of credit have been good. We just drew on a couple the other day, and banks generally honor those. The other thing is we've refunded quite a few bonds over the last 78 years, and that saved us a lot of money in our bond and interest account. So what's important here is that we continue not to have to levy too much money into this fund due to the fact that we've saved money and that our collections on special assessments have been so positive, that, you know, is a over $2 million balance in that account, which is very strong for a bond and interest fund. And I've just looked at the numbers, and I think we'll be right around that at the end of '17 also. So that's a very positive number and enables us to do projects and have flexibility in other funds, 'cause we don't have to put so much, many property tax dollars towards the bond and interest fund. And then the wastewater fund balance continues to accumulate in anticipation of either in between 2020 and 2025 that we may have to do a new plant. Now, we continue to have good success in meeting KDHE standards, and we've been able to continue to put that off, but as you can see, just our carryover number in the sewer fund, wastewater fund, continues to increase year by year, and I'll show you a slide later that shows that we have, you know, about $6 million or so in the wastewater expansion fund. You increase rates a few years ago in anticipation of this. We want, our goal would be not to have to increase rates very much when we get to that point, when we have to do a new plant. You know, we'll have to judge it at that time, but we certainly are off to a good start on this. Our, well, we had a, had a problem there. Our direct debt ratio is 28%. I don't know what happened with that slide, but you can see it's just under 30%. You know, the reality is, though, that our overlapping debt is gonna go above 60% because of the bond issue, and we just had a rating call the other day with Standard and Poor, and, you know, they didn't mention it or say much about it, but I know they're looking at it, and, you know, I don't know what the result will be. I would mention, in that rating call, we also learned that our Public Building Commission rating will be a notch below our typical AA rating because of what the state did with the tax lid. Our bond counsel and financial advisor warned us about this. I had forgotten, so when they said it on the phone, I was like, "Well, that's not great news." And, you know, I don't know for sure. I haven't gotten the rating yet, but they were suggesting that it's gonna at least be a notch lower because we can't rate, raise taxes without, of course, voter approval in order to meet our obligations there, so we have to rely on other revenues of the city is, is what things say. So that's just kinda the bottom line, is we'll probably wind up paying quarter percent higher, I would guess, on our bond issue than we otherwise would have had it not been for the tax lid. And then you can see our city employees, including fire reservists, have remained pretty steady. That will go up next year certainly because we're gonna be hiring a few other people, and certainly a few years from now with, with three firefighters. That's fine. We're, we're good. Just wanna keep in mind our vacation and sick leave liability. This is something I know that was brought up and created a little bit of alarm four or five years ago. I think we've genuinely done a good job of keeping that liability in, in check. You can see it's gone up. That's partly because, you know, people have earned more vacation and we've hired a few more employees, but I think it's manageable. I don't think it's a huge concern at, at this point, but it is something, year after year, we need to look at what that liability is and what we would have to pay out people. I remind everybody that we don't pay out sick leave when people leave. We pay out vacation, but we don't pay out sick leave. That's in our personnel manual, and so that liability, I guess, is if everybody cashed in their sick leave or was taking sick leave at once, he has to report it, but the fact of the matter is, we don't pay it out when people leave. Okay, now I'm gonna come, kinda come to the summary section of this. The overall budget increase is 5%. Now, Caroline asked this question the other day, and I feel like that's the honest number to portray, because that's how much about we're getting more in property tax. If you add in transfers and a few other things, you can show the budget to look like it went up 1%, but overall, I would, you know, generally would say to the public that we're increasing about 5% based on property tax revenue. So, you know, I don't wanna be, I wanna be as transparent as possible about that number. General funding, spending's gone up about 5.2%. I do wanna mention something I think we told you at the last meeting, is we're planning on paving the parking lots and redoing the parking lots for fire and police, and that was an expense that was added in, but we think we can afford it. Property tax revenues are going up 5.5%. Again, the current sales tax of .75%, that's paying for the street shop, the restroom, and the fire truck is scheduled, or projected, excuse me, is scheduled to go off in 2020, but we're projecting it should go off by the end of 2018, based on current collections. The wastewater expansion fund is up to $6.5 million. Of course, when you're looking at a potential $20 million expenditure, that's still not quite as much as we'd like to have, but we're making progress. And the street sales tax fund has an excess of $5 million. We're getting ready to do some projects with that, including Southwest 120th, South Andover Road, and we've got a few other things we're looking at, but that's, that's a nice fund balance, too, and that sales tax has really enabled Andover to leverage a lot of money from the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization in terms of federal funds, and just in general, keep up on our street maintenance. We do about, you know, a million dollars, what we project, I think because of road and construction costs, it's been a bit less than that the last couple of years, but we do a lot, about a million dollars in maintenance a year, including resurfacing and reworking people's residential streets, which in many towns, they have to charge a special assessment for, but we've managed to avoid that with the enactment of the sales tax for streets some 17 or 18 years ago. Just a reminder, we're building an amphitheater that we just broke ground on the other day, and are financing 1.15 million of that through the Public Building Commission. It'll be a continuation of debt we have on the books for the lodge and a few other park improvements. We also have some other budgeted funds we're paying for that with. A project we would really like to do, but we are continuing to negotiate with property owners and a few other folks in the area is Yorktown Road from US 400 to 54 to Douglas Avenue. That is in our, in our goals, and we've put it in the capital improvement plan and hoping to get to that next year. Then, of course, the South Andover Road project, Calvake Lane to Southwest 120th. Big portion of that, $4.9 million, is being paid for by WAMPO, so that, you know, is again, a real positive. Les has done a great job working with that committee, as well as Troy, to obtain those funds. City share will be 1.6 million, and we're hoping to pay cash and not do any debt on that, just take that from the sales tax fund. We've had that scheduled for a while. Wanna remind you, the one new position we have this year is the events coordinator, who in large part will be responsible for the management of the operations of the amphitheater. We're looking for them to office at Central Park right now, salary of approximately $55,000 to $60,000. 50% of that salary will come from CBB, hoping 10% from the festivals fund, which primarily funds GAD right now, and the balance of the salary is from the eliminated Assistant Recreation Director position that we have not filled since that position left, that we would like to use towards this, and that person will report to the Assistant City Administrator. And, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions before we go ahead and authorize the publication of the budget for the public hearing on July 25th?
My right to fall asleep?
(laugh) Try to be quick. What I'll remind you is that today is the last day we can go up on the mill levy. After we publish it, all we can do is go down at the public hearing. So, if we publish at just below 41, we can't go any higher. I think it's 40.972 or something like that, but we can't go up in two weeks. We can only go down.
I don't like the need to go up.
Well, and there's always, always more you could have, but we're good.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the publication of the 2018 budget notice as presented with no mill levy increase.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Sherri, to approve the publication of the 2018 budget hearing notice as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number 10, which is zoning case Z 2017-03. This is a proposed amendment to the Cornerstone PUD to rezone some existing B3 shopping district to the R4 multiple-family residential district, and to reconfigure some boundaries of parcel 6 and 7 to expand the area of parcel 7. Before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask if any of the city council members intend to disqualify themselves voting on this because of a conflict or bias?
No.
No.
All righty. Has a city clerk received any protest petitions?
No protest petitions have been filed since the hearing at the planning commission.
All right. I'll ask the council members if they've all received the unapprovements of the planning commission meeting for June 20th, 2017?
Yep.
Yes.
Which summarizes the hearing on the case. I will call on our zoning administrator to provide us with a report on the case and recommendation of the planning commission.
I think this amendment is pretty much self-explanatory. As Ben explained to you, the area of the multifamily parcel was increased, therefore decreasing the area of the B3 neighborhood business area. And in doing so, the developer has actually reduced the maximum number of dwelling units. So you have an increase in area and a reduction in the density. Your planning commission heard this at their last meeting and recommended unanimously to approve of it.
For you is the ordinance which would approve that recommendation of the planning commission, council. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I'd recommend that we adopt an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Andover Planning Commission changing the zoning district classification of certain lands located in the city of Andover, Kansas, under the authority granted by the zoning regulations of the city, is originally approved by ordinance number 1187, and is approved and recommended by the Andover Planning Commission's finding and factors.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Sherri, to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. Changing the name of a street?
Excuse me. Excuse me. A few years back, the developer of Cornerstone sold off a portion of that land they owned to the school district. In doing so, they retained, as you see up there on the very north end of what is Bluestone Street, a little small section they were intended to put a cul-de-sac in. Thank you. So they put a cul-de-sac right there, they sold all this land off. Well, in doing so, that changed the street pattern. The original street pattern and original plot had it going on up and continuing on, so thus, when the original street was plotted up through here, this is all called Bluestone Street, which is a typical street type for a through-traffic street. So, it's quite simple. By changing it, this section right here, technically by our standards, and which is what Cedric County, Butler County Hall have adopted also, changes that type of a street to circle. I personally went out and talked to the houses that are occupied and have been built out there to advise them. All it would change is their designation of a type from street to circle. Their address numbers would stay the same. I asked if any of them had any questions, and none really had any questions. I all understood, so. If anybody hasn't seen questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, the whole area will now be the circle, now the entire cul-de-sac.
Just from where the last street goes through, where it drops off near this court here, from this section on through up to there, will all be circle.
Right. Okay. So that whole area, okay. So when you, so when somebody goes by, they realize it's a dead end because of this, this name? I mean, it should...
Right, right there, we will put a, we already have the sign. It was part of the developer's requirements to give us the sign. There's a sign there that has like a Bluestone Circle going this way, Bluestone Street going this way, Bluestone Court going that way, kind of a three-way sign.
Right. 'Cause I, obviously, that's kind of an confusing area, but if you're driving around trying to find an address, I can see where, especially when it's a really long cul-de-sac, you can end up going down a street and not even realizing, so that's good. I think that's an improvement.
Is that a motion to approve that ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Chris, to adopt the ordinance renaming the section of North Bluestone Street to North Bluestone Circle.
Stom, doesn't it?
Further discussion.
Stom.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12 is the executive session. Somebody be so kind to call that.
Mr. Mayor, council members, there's been a change in law effective July 1st on how we call executive sessions, so I thought I might explain that.
All right.
For years, the law has said that you have to say for what purpose you are meeting in executive session, and the Attorney General's Office and other court decisions have said that obviously that just requires you to indicate your justification for going into executive session, because obviously in executive session, for example, on attorney-client privilege, wouldn't it be very helpful if I had to explain actually what we were gonna discuss under attorney-client privilege? However, the Kansas Legislature, to the confusion of all of us, has changed that now and said that we must explain both our justification and our purpose for going into executive session, and so lawyers are left to figure out what they could have possibly meant. And so, the way the majority of us in the league has recommended is that we're gonna state a general purpose as well of our justification. So tonight, we're requesting an executive session under the justification of attorney-client privilege for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations and potential litigation for a period not to exceed 35 minutes, to include the council, the mayor, the city administrator, myself, and the director of public works.
And the assistant city administrator.
And I'm sorry, the assistant city administrator, of course.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Sherri and a second by Troy to go in executive session for the purposes of attorney-client privilege to discuss potential litigation and contractual matters, to include the governing body, the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, the city attorney, and the public works director for approximately 35 minutes.
That was amazing.
Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Dang, why can't we begin at the second? We're in the meeting.
Turn the heat up.
Longer than our meeting.
We get out of the house.
Never ever get out.
I'm sorry.
What did you say?
When the car gets hot, it leaves.
Oh, I'll never turn the AC on there again.
How about you?
Thanks.
Thinking about skipping.
Yeah, that's longer, that's longer than the whole meeting.
They might not know that you're gone. Brushing fingers.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
I think I'm in a boogie. I'm here for the, the library. Go over and try to make sure we have somebody.
You're not going to miss anything, I'm sure.
Well, I don't know.
Well, that's true, that's true.
...